Call the meeting to order, Albright. This is for the Pledge of Legions. The Pledge of Legions.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Prule of the agenda, is there any changes?
I have two, I'd like to add under Action Item 7, appointment of EMT.
Okay.
And AP, the BPI grant.
Counsel, have any other changes? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the February 3rd, 2021 regular meeting. All receive them in your packet. Is there any changes, corrections, or clarification needed on the minutes? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 3rd meeting?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Sheldon, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. We now come to the public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time, is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed, we have no public hearings. We will now go into police presentation, or reports presentations, Police Department. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, we'll start off with the January activity report for January this year. Some of the numbers we had there. We had 28 matter of information calls, 15 citizen contacts. We did assist for businesses, 108 of those. Did 20 assists for other agencies. We had four intoxicated person calls. We had nine juvenile problems. We did 52 special detail, like door checks. We had seven false alarms, 24 assists for persons, 20 medicals, five accidents, 28 school patrols. We gave out 138 verbal warnings. We had total number of calls of 465, so with the verbal warnings, it ended up with 603. And compare that to last year, we're right pretty even, all the way through. And compare it to last month, where numbers are going up, I think because more people are getting out a little bit, maybe. So that's January of this year. So now we'll go back to the annual report for 2020. Hopefully you read through it all, so I can skim through it for you. First page there, looking at the years of service for all our full-time employees, 144 years of experience. I think that says a lot for the Department of the Community. Looking at some of the major crimes, burglary, burglaries are up. We had 12 compared to six last year. Domestic assaults are up, we had 15 compared to 10. Thefts are down a little. We had 107 last year, 94 this year. Zero robberies, assaults are down, 14 last year, seven this year. Sexual assaults are down, seven last year, three this year, and no arson. The next page there talks about the DWIs. DWIs, we had 36, and that was down from 46 last year. And I think one of the reasons for that, too, is, you know, with COVID, no businesses were open, so that curtails that. Of those 36 DWIs, 28 of them were under the influence of alcohol, and eight of them were under the influence of controlled substance. So by May was the busiest month for DWI arrests. The next sheet there, drug statistics for K-9. As you see, it's, I can barely read the numbers. Looks like it's pretty, I think we had 23 there, it says. You probably read it better than I can. For marijuana possession arrest, controlled substance, was just slightly up. And then the major month for deployments for K-9 was in April. Sonny had a busy year, but still he, same effect, he was out for probably, he had both legs and knee surgeries done, so he was out for quite a while, so that didn't help. Next page there, just kind of goes through some of the traffic violations. If you look, driving after revocation was way up, we had 79 citations compared to 56 last year. Driving after cancellation is pretty equal. No Minnesota driver's licenses have gone down, actually, 35 compared to 61 last year. And the no proof of insurance has gone dramatically down, too. Speeding is down. You see their use of wireless devices, we had 47 this year compared to two last year, so starting to work that a little more. And the verbal warnings were slightly down. Assist for other agencies there. We did 85 assists for State Patrol, 128 assists for Stearns County, 93 assists for Melrose PD, 18 assists for Todd County, and we had 10 K-9 assists. Warrants are, we had six misdemeanor warrant arrests, four gross misdemeanor arrests, 10 felony arrests. So those are all kind of down. Calls for service. You see the calls per the busy hours are 10 to 11 during the days. Calls per day, Friday and Saturdays are the higher numbers. And then the calls per the month were July and August, the big months. The next sheet there, the miscellaneous calls, kind of skimmed through that. We did a lot more assists for businesses. Gun permits were almost doubled, that we gave out. Dog complaints are up for some reason. Juvenile problems were higher. Medical calls have gone up, 255 medicals to 239 last year. School patrol, of course, that was way down, being there was no school going on. Otherwise, all the numbers are pretty, if you have a question, you sure can ask me about any of them, at any time you want. The last page there, training. With COVID going on in our department, a lot of the training that we do, hands-on with each other, you know, doing the use of force stuff, and we had to kind of not do that with COVID. You know, eight-man department, we didn't want to be, hopefully, getting sick and wiping out our departments, so some of the numbers there are down for that. Forfeitures. We retained $6,603 in forfeitures compared to $16,867 last year. So these funds came from five vehicles, three forfeitures were alcohol-related, and two were drug-related, and one cash. And then the budget, I guess the number you want to look at is, we ended up in the Police Department budget with a surplus of $21,453.
You always throw that in. Any questions for Brian?
Good job, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I give my year-end reports, I'd like to take the opportunity to personally thank our crew and loved ones. Just like the rest of this world, 2020 was very difficult for us. As part of the healthcare field, we asked our staff to accept change of policy and procedure, sometimes on a daily basis. Don PPE, or personal protective equipment from head to toe. Decontaminate equipment on every call, and take care of the sick with skill and compassion. Our staff completed this without question, for this, I thank them. 2020, we, on the call aspect, was down nine calls from last year. That's basically because the COVID wiped out St. Clair Lewis Days and the fair for that year. Transfers, we had 320 transfers to 30 different hospitals throughout Minnesota and North Dakota, which included Grand Forks, North Dakota, Fargo, North Dakota, The Fever, Duluth, Rochester, and several in the metro. Since Sock Center Hospital became a COVID hospital in October of 2020, we also had 13 transfers to Melrose and Long Prairie that took care of non-COVID positive patients that needed advanced care. We also conducted eight return trips from Sock Center Hospitals to nursing homes and private residents. Those are paid by the hospital, not insurance companies. We did some mutual aid to area ambulance services, two to Melrose, which were medicals because they didn't have any staff to take their medicals. Paynesville requested us to do a transfer to Fargo because they had a shortage of, I think one of their ambulances was out for service. North Ambulance had no rig available and requested us to handle one of their medicals and transfer that patient to Almir Hospital in Alexandria. And Long Prairie also requested us for mutual aid on a crash that they were handling. We currently have three ambulances that have three Lucas devices. A Lucas device will help us with CPR. We used these devices on six patients in 2020, and we had one long-term save in 2019 directly because of the Lucas device. Special events for the year, because of COVID, we had to scale back on most of our special event deals we do. But the year, we did complete one at the beginning of the year, the presentation to the Senior Center for Heart Health Month. And we did a couple standbys for football games this fall. On the billing side of the report, we had a lot of increase with this. We billed out 738 calls, which was a 4.2% increase from last year. That billed out just shy of $900,000 worth of ambulance bills, which was a 6% increase. On the collection side, we were up 13.22%. We use an outside billing company called Experti Billing out of the metro, which collected They returned back, or adjusted, $307,887.24 of billing. We entered $60,000 and change to either revenue recapture, collections, or wrote off some files. Currently, Experti Billing is holding 304 open files, because it takes some time, some time to collect some of these files, which is just shy of $250,000 worth of billing. That was, I reported in a nutshell. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Council and Mayor. The 2020 Fire Chiefs Annual Report. We'll start with response calls. Structure fires, in 2019, we had 11, 2020, we had nine. Grass fires was nine each year. Medicals and rescue calls was 25 in 2019, 29 in 2020. Vehicle accidents and fires was 17 in 2019, and 27 in 2020. Gas, smoke, and alarm calls was 30 in 2019, and 21 in 2020. False or canceled calls was 27 in 19, and 17 in 2020. And service calls was three in 2019, and two in 2020. For a total of 122 calls in 2019, and 114 in 2020. Response calls billed was $16,795. Response calls received from 2019 was $2,580. Response calls received in 2020 was $10,955. Unpaid was $4,490. And collections and write-offs was $3,835. Grants, reimbursements, and donations. Family of Rosie's family was a $25 donation. Mike and Nancy Know was a $100 donation. John and Kristy Failing was $100. Black Oak Wind LLC was $2,000. Del Emma was $1,000. Minnesota Dark House and Angling Association was 500. ICE OVO was 500. Center Point Energy Grant was 2,000. ComPure Financial Fire Grant was 3,000. Minnesota VNR was 2,500. Tim and Patty Bowinger was a $100 donation. Community Connection was a $500 donation. And the Sock Center Fire Relief was $48,000, for a total of $60,325 in donations and grants. In 2020, we had zero firefighters retired, and we didn't hire any firefighters in 2020. But we did have two resignations here in 2021, so that is it. Any questions?
Counsel, have any questions? Okay, thank you, Seif.
Thanks.
Visit Sock Center report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our goal last year was just to cut expenses and support our hotels and motels, and focused on advertising, basically, in Minnesota. We accomplished that by cutting my work hours to end up at four hours a week, which I was working from home, just actually came back to the office last week, added hours on. Explore Minnesota Tourism has changed their grant funding to include state advertising, which is a big plus for us, because most of the funding from Explore Minnesota is 50% to 70% advertising out of state. And because of COVID, they've changed that, where we can advertise within the state and get reimbursed for that, which is a big help. So that is still going on. We have changed quite a bit of the way we are advertising, and I'll talk a little bit about that as we go on. Since last year, since I was here, Sock Center was in the running for a choice for the Midwest Vintage Snowmobile Show. We did lose out to Elk River with that. Not, they loved the place, they loved the presentation, but the prior group had financial obligations that were, that they needed to stay within that county. And so that's why we did not get the big snowmobile show. That's the one that 8,500 people come to? It's been going on for 25, 30 years, something like that. They were in McCordia, and then they went to Elk River. We placed print ads, AAA, Visitors Guides in St. Cloud, Minnesota Trail, Snowmobile Magazine, Up North Magazine. We updated our meeting guide, which I gave a copy to you, so that you could see that. And it's already changed, so that's how fast things change and go into print. Also, there was a coupon in there that we did, basically for Berg's Farm, but also did enough to be able to put these out in welcome packets for the different businesses, and that went over very well. We see, we received $2,540 from the CARES Act, and we reimbursed back from the city for administrative purposes, $2,473. We wrote a grant for city beautification, and we received a donation from Getty Wind Farm, which is pretty much ongoing. They support the flower baskets in town and do a nice job, so. Last January, we had the first annual snowdown, snowmobile races on Sock Lake, which went very well, and I'd like to thank the city and the Fire Department and Public Works Department who really made that happen. And there was a lot of, quite a bit of controversy around that with a group that actually is called the Snowdown Festival. And they have since moved to Texas and are doing fair weather events down there, and apparently doing fine. So this year, we did have another snowmobile race, and again, thank you to the city and the parks, and all those people really did a nice job. Fire Department also. And I did advertise to all three snowmobile and recreational companies to come together and to support or sponsor that event, too. It declined, and so I think Country Cat will be the sole sponsor of that. We had a very good race this year. We had over, we had about 100 drivers, and again, the ice was perfect, and it went over very well, so we're pleased with that. We supported a guided tour program for historic sites and murals that was done by Gwen Krantz with the History Museum and Artify Sock Center, and that is being, it is ready to go. We've had several trial runs with different groups, and that will be ready to go next summer, which is a really nice help. We have headsets and microphones, so that when you're walking on Main Street, you can hear, you can hear what the history and the information is about each mural, so that worked out really well. Google Analytics, we had, we have 2,664 followers. We have 276 followers on Twitter, 497 on Instagram. We had, on the Explore Minnesota website, we had 971 views, and we had 122 referrals from that website. We had, from Explore Minnesota, we had 1,309 leads that we sent out, that many Visitors Guides, plus what was sent to all the tourist information centers. Our income took quite a, quite a drop. We lost quite a bit of income due to COVID, and in 19, we were at 56,834, and in 2020, it was 40,181. I think that we're going to be okay. Like I say, Explore Minnesota had a special marketing program, and that was for $10,000, and we received that grant. We will not, however, get that until the end of 2021, which will be like February of 2022. So basically, what we have to do is just make sure we got the money in there to do this year's ads and things like that. And that's why I cut down my hours for such a long time. Our promotions will center around local travel, with the opportunity to stay overnight. We'll continue to promote outdoor activities, social distancing and mask wearing. Our summer concerts are scheduled, as well as a fall art prom. And we're not sure how far that's going to go, because we got an email from Stearns County that said to be cautious about large gatherings again. But I think these are outdoor events where we can social distance fairly easily, and it would provide some entertainment for people that have been sort of without anything for a year. So we're looking forward to that. In conclusion, most of our advertising will be done virtually. We did do some print ads, AAA again, and Minnesota Travel, Minnesota Monthly, Minneapolis-St. Paul, Minnesota Hunting and Fishing, and those were also the areas that Explore Minnesota allowed for granting opportunities. So that was a big help for us, because I believe that we draw most of our, most of our visitors from a three-hour to four-hour radius of Sock Center. And that includes Duluth and Fargo and those areas. And so I'm very pleased that we got to advertise in those areas and be supportive of that. Our hotels have been doing an excellent job. They supplied some comp rooms for us for the snowmobile events, and also the visiting artists who will be painting the book benches, which is starting this month. And our website and social media account run by Michaela Soderland is doing very, very well. She does a lot of nice postings for Sock Center, and has a lot of interesting input into keeping Sock Center in the forefront of advertising, so we really appreciate her effort. And that's my report for 2020. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Monthly Report. Ben?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Over the past month, up at the arena, we received a donation from Pam Gerke for a new bottle filling water fountain. It's installed and working now. We had two pieces of glass that ended up with cracks this past month. We did have spare sheets that we were able to cut to the proper size and replace these, so did not have to purchase any. Ice maintenance has been ongoing. We shave the ice sheet and edge usually once a week, sometimes twice, depending on how thick it gets. The schedule at the arena has remained full between the association and the high school. I have had, I don't know, probably three or four calls a week for ice rental, and we've been able to accommodate a few of those, but not, not all of them due to how full the schedule is. We did have a gas leak that was found by one of the water heaters at the arena, and then we had this repaired by a plumber, so it was lucky that was found in time. Fire Hall, that was upgraded to LED lights, we assisted the electrician with that. Streets, we're working on plans for summer projects, whether an oven overlay or seal coating. And we did have one stormwater intake grate that was damaged by the hospital that's been replaced. A second round of sidewalk inspections was done for snow removal. There was about 25 people that had not removed their snow this time, so that was done and built. Repaired and repainted about 20 picnic tables. Asher removal is taking place again. We left off in that Pine Birch Street area on the east side of Main Street, and there's about 35 trees left to be removed in that area to complete that project. Also did some work to equipment to prep for the upcoming spring season. And then at the outdoor rink, we did have the furnace go down on us, we had a new gas valve put in, so that's back up and running. Even with how cold it's been, the sun has a lot of power and is starting to melt the edge of the ice around the boards, so with the way the weather looks next week, that might be, might be the final week, I'm guessing. By the first of March, that'll be it for the outdoor rink ice. Any questions I can answer?
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Seif.
Planning Commission Monthly Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have a copy of the February 9th Planning Commission meeting agenda, and we did hold a public hearing to rezone, we refer to it as Ungrag Land, 59 acres just kind of south of the truck stop, and that's an action item later on your agenda. You have a copy of the January billing permits, which is kind of typical for this time of the year. time of the year, so there's very few coming in. Other than that, that's about all I have.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Sarah. Move on to action items. 7A, approve Medicare adjustments.
This first item that you have on your agenda refers back to the ambulance report. He had talked about adjustments that have to be written off at the year-end. These are mostly like Medicare rate downs and insurance rate downs, where there's agreements of how much can be paid. The total amount of the ambulance billing adjustments to be for 2020 is $238,933.60, and that's something that needs to be approved by the city council, and then those will be taken off the books according to the mandate. So there's not a lot you can do about it, but we still have to take that action.
Okay. Questions about that? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve the ambulance billing adjustment?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Shaolin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7B, approve ordinance 801 amending zoning map.
As Sarah said in her report, at its meeting on February 9th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider amendment to the zoning map to rezone the city property at the intersection of 71 South and State Highway 28 to industrial commercial. The city purchased the property for industrial commercial purposes and has recently applied for a grant to allow for that development. As part of the grant process, the city must ensure the property is properly zoned, and that is why we took action to go ahead and zone it, rezone it at this time. The Planning Commission recommends that the city approve the zoning map amendment that's in front of you as ordinance 801. And I also included the current zoning map and then also the proposed, so you can see how that will, will sit within the zoning. And so we have ordinance 801, ordinance of the city at Sock Center amending the official zoning map of the city as outlined in section 156.036 of the city code.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 801?
I'd make the motion.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second? Heidi seconded it. Any other discussion? Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7C, approve ordinance 799 amending airport zoning ordinance.
At its meeting on February 4th, 2021, the Joint Airport Zoning Board met and passed a resolution adopting the airport zoning ordinance for the Sock Center Municipal Airport. The purpose of the airport zoning ordinance is to manage the height and placement of structures and uses within the airport safety zone. The airport safety zone is 5,000 feet from the runway surface in all directions, so it's a big oval shape over the airport. The previous airport zoning ordinance was adopted in 1979. This new ordinance updates the maps and provides for additional governance mandated by MINDOT, Aeronautics, and FAA. The next step in the process is for the city, the township, and the county to incorporate the joint airport zoning ordinance into their respective codes. And so what we have in front of you tonight is to approve ordinance 799, regulating and restricting the height of structures and objects of natural growth and otherwise regulating the use of property in the vicinity of the Sock Center Municipal Airport. And I do have the entire airport safety zoning ordinance in your packet, and we will, we will change how they spell center the correct way for Sock Center. And so that actually already has been corrected before this was sent down to MINDOT. So the first part then is to approve that ordinance 799, incorporating that ordinance into our city code.
Questions, comments?
When did the other, the township and the county do that? Have they already done that?
They have, they've been sent there. I don't believe either of them had meetings yet.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 799?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Diane. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shaolin. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approve ordinance 800 authorizing summary publication of ordinance 799.
So as you know, Minnesota statute allows for summary publication of lengthy ordinances when the title of the ordinance clearly indicates the content. And so we're requesting that the city council approve the summary publication of the airport zoning ordinance 799. So this is in the form of ordinance 800, which would approve us to sub, to publish the summary ordinance rather than the entire ordinance. And so that is our, our request to approve ordinance 800 summarizing that ordinance for publication.
Any questions or concerns over that? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 800 summarizing ordinance 799?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7E, approve appointment of patrol officer.
So we do have an upcoming resignation of a full-time patrol officer, and at that point, this position will become vacant. The police officer recently held, the police department recently held interviews, and we've created a hiring list for future positions. The department is recommending that Eric Grabmeyer be appointed to fill the position. He is a current part-time officer with the city. He's worked with us since May 20th of 2020. He's currently on step one of the union pay scale. His date to advance to step two then would be based upon when he completes a total of 20, 80 hours. So his date of hire to full-time won't be the same date that he steps, but that is how we have agreed to handle part-time conversion to full-time with the union. The actual date would be the same as the date that the resignation is effective for the officer that is leaving. So it would just kind of meld right in there. The estimated date for that right now is approximately March 1st, right around that date. And so, and what that is, is when it would be Officer Danielson, when his hours, the balance of his accumulated leave hours are, are done, then he would move into that resignation phase, and then Eric would be able to take, take that position. So we're looking to appoint Eric Grabmeyer to fill the upcoming patrol officer vacancy.
Any questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the appointment?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7F, EMT.
So this is a request by the Sock Center Ambulance Department, and it is a request for an appointment of an EMT. Richard White has been attending the EMT initial class through Mid-Minnesota EMS Education since August. He passed his written test for the class, as well as the practical skills testing. He's been doing ride-alongs with the service and has well surpassed the required number of patient contacts needed. He's scheduled to take the National Registry test today. And so pending a passing score with the National Registry, she's recommending hiring Richard White as probationary EMT with Sock Center Ambulance at the current pay rate for probationary EMT. So this is at the request of Kathy Struford, ambulance director. It is for the appointment of Richard White as a probationary EMP, EMT upon a passing score with the National Registry.
Comments, questions? Do I have a motion to appoint Richard White?
Richard White, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, seconded by Shaolin. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, special assessment policy.
The special assessment policy, the updated one has been sent to the committee for review, and then we should have that back to you at the next council meeting, and then that, once that special assessment policy is complete, then we'll be able to start talking about upcoming projects, which we may talk about the next meeting as well, I'm not sure. So you'll see that coming.
Okay. 8B, the grant?
BDPI. This has to do with the BDPI grant that we applied for. Received this letter from Minnesota Economic and Employment and Economic Development, which you all probably know as DEED. Dear Mayor Stone, I'm pleased to inform you that the City of Sock Center's application for a Greater Minnesota Business Development Public Infrastructure Program grant for the Sock Center Industrial Park South has been approved in the amount of $1,320,481. Under the authority of the Minnesota Statute 116J, this award will provide the necessary resources for continued economic growth and enhance employment in the community and surrounding area. Future uses of the infrastructure must comply with the statute. All parties involved in the preparation of the city's application can be proud of this award. DEED staff's aim, will, aim is to assist you and your staff in achieving your business and community development goals, and then I've already been contacted by them with all the red tape. Finally, let me extend my congratulations to you and your staff for developing approach that will effectively address your business and community development needs regarding Steve Grove, Commissioner. So it kind of gives you where we go from here on that Unckeragland. They did send us, they sent me the grant agreement, which has a lot of responsive, or a lot of encumbrances in that. I forwarded that to Keith Yap and also to Heidi Pepper at STANTEC to review, as well as myself, and reviewing it to make sure that we are a complete understanding of that. And then we'll bring that before you at the next meeting, and we'll kind of decipher everything of what our responsibilities are and what, what restrictions, I guess, are going to be in place as a result of that grant. So that's where we are. We've been working with Jeremy at DEED since we actually submitted the application, sending him more and more information, and, and so then he did send me the email, and then I did get the follow-up letter today. Good news.
Good. Any comments on that or anything?
Good job, Vicky.
Yes.
I was going to say thank you to Vicky for putting that grant together.
Well, I had help at STANTEC, so. They sent me the grant, and I tweaked it a little bit.
New business, Local Board of Appeal and Equalization Meeting.
So the Local Board of Appeal meeting has been scheduled for April 12th at 1:00. It was scheduled here for City Hall, but now with the county employees continuing to work from home due concern, due to concerns with COVID, their staff is all going to be attending virtually. So the city, we can attend virtually as well, as members of the public can attend virtually, kind of like we did last year. And so we have two options. We can have the county virtual, and the city can be here, and the public can choose either, or we can just all dial in and all do it virtually. That's up to you. I have to let them know. So I need you to decide if you want option one, which is they will only be calling in, and then we could be here, or we just all go virtual.
Guess it's up to Council.
I like option one. I want to be here.
So then, and, and how that will work is, you know, you'll get that notice of property tax assessment for your value, and on that, if it's going to be all virtual, they'll say, this is how you call in to attend virtually, and if it's going to be able to be in person, then they'll have the option of doing either.
Actually, for me, it works better to be in person.
I, I think it creates less confusion, too, for people who might have some sort of an appeal.
Right.
They're used to coming in.
For us, it isn't any different than what we're doing right now.
No, it's just a matter of tagging in.
Tagging in.
That.
Right.
And I'm not sure, I think last time we did it over the phone. So it could be that we'll just have a phone here that will bring them in on the phone, or it could be on their laptop. I'm not sure which program they're going to use yet, so we'll get it set up either way. So option one it is.
Is that okay with Shaolin and Joe?
Yeah, me too.
I know what she's, I won't be able to attend, I know that already, but.
What's that?
I won't be able to attend it, but I think option one's a good one.
Okay. Option one, then. That brings us to our consent agenda. The Council to consider the following consent agenda items. We have schedule of claims, unpaid claims of $204,032.79 for a total of the same, and list of checks of $1,284,686.17. Is there any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shaolin. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items.
I just have the one, Hazardous Waste Collection. It's been scheduled for June 16th at the Civic Arena from 10 to 2:00. So it's just a four-hour time period now, but we'll get everybody through in that. And they are asking for volunteers again, as they have in the past, so we'll be looking to fill that. I have nothing else.
Okay. Comments? That brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.